Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, April 16. I'd like to read the statement that's printed on every agenda. We welcome and appreciate your presence at this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. We respectfully request that you turn off cellular phones and refrain from clapping, cheering, or making audible comments. We invite you to make formal public comment during the designated times on either the agenda items or non-agenda items, if you wish, or on both. To do so, please fill out the comment card and submit it. Mr. Johnson is collecting those to the board table. Please limit your comments to approximately three minutes. Ms. Grant, our secretary, will give you a one-minute warning. Thank you. And now will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Reverend Mathias?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Shaki?
Here.
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant, present. And President FOB?
Present.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support?
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no celebrations. So, Ms. Abney?
Thank you. Union, Ottawa, and Central High School hosted Military Ball this weekend on Saturday, and it was a night of fun, excellent food, and amazing music. The Gold Orange Event at Ottawa High School was a partnership with Kids Food Basket and community members. It was a goal to help end child hunger. And just a reminder, Kids Speak is April 27th. All ages of students can submit an essay and speak on this year's theme of immigration, tearing down the laws.
Thank you. Awesome. Do we have public comment on board agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. Secretary's report.
All right, we just have a few reminders for the board committee meeting schedule. The Academic Achievement Committee meets Tuesday, April 18th, at 9:00 a.m. in the auditorium. And the Finance Committee is meeting on Monday, April 23rd, at 4:00 p.m. in the auditorium. The Ad Hoc Policy Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, April 25th, at 8:00 a.m. in Room 10.
Great. Thank you. Committee Chair updates. Reverend Mathias, Academic Achievement Committee.
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow at 9:00 o'clock, and we're going to be talking about our priority school updates, and also looking at the math curriculum and just how we're doing in that arena among our schools. So we invite the public to follow that.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Shaki?
Yeah, we had a good March meeting, pretty standard with purchasing agenda items. We had a nice bond update. Things really are moving forward quite well, really great things happening at Buchanan ahead of schedule. Mr. Clomparence was kind enough to send out some accolades to our design and construction team of GMB and Triangle. I understand they're doing really great work over there, so I just want to second that thanks. Also, it's hard to think about air conditioning, but those projects are coming up fast and really excited that many of our elementary schools will see that here in the near future. Campus in Saff Frost this fall, North Park, East Leonard, Shawman Hills, and Buchanan next spring, which is fantastic. And then, I understand that there was a Senate budget update presented at the work session that I was unable to attend, so I'm glad you got to see that. Just want us to be thinking forward to our own budgeting process. So to my fellow board members, we do have a few tentative dates, and it's just really important as we move into the budgeting season that we try to attend. So I will make sure you have these dates, but just if you want to jot them down, we are looking tentatively at Monday, June 11 for the budget presentation at our work session, and then a public hearing and our vote on Monday, June 18. So again, I'll have Julie follow up with those dates for your calendars.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Lewis, ad hoc policy?
Yes, we are going to have a meeting this week from Wednesday, on the 25th, discussing some other policies. I assume I go over these within action items. Okay.
Okay. Great. And Ms. Lewis and Ms. Shaki, you were at the national conference.
Do you want me to take it away? Yep. All right, fantastic. Yeah, so Ms. Lewis and I had the opportunity to travel to San Antonio, Texas, for the National School Board Association Annual Conference, and it really was a tremendous opportunity for us to be with, gosh, nearly 9,000, I think, of our fellow school board members across the nation, learn from schools that have best practices, and just be in an atmosphere of learning. So Ms. Lewis and I are going to sort of tag-team a couple of sessions that we want to report out on that were really impactful for us. And so I will start with one that I attended on educator effectiveness, how formal teacher leader roles can improve instruction. So what I absolutely loved about this session was, I talked a lot about teacher career pathways. So I think that as we look at the teacher model, oftentimes, the career pathway leads to administration. It doesn't always lead to advanced leadership in the classroom. And so this particular model, the teach factor, really talks about how we can keep teachers in the classroom but move them through a career pathway. And so what that looked like was, at the base level, it is a, I'm looking at my notes here, a career teacher, so someone in the classroom throughout their career. At the next level, it was a mentor teacher, so someone in the classroom who also acts as a coach and leads professional development, up to a master teacher. And so that master teacher actually doesn't have a specific classroom assignment but floats about the school, doing coaching, co-teaching, and really being at that upper echelon in professional development. And so I thought that model was really interesting. What I also really loved about it was the data. And so schools that have implemented this kind of process are looking at 94% retention rates for teachers. So it was a really great session, and brought back a lot of information that I'd love to share with my colleagues after the meeting. And then, of course, what is, to my true passion, is career and technical education, and there are many sessions around that. And so one, again, that I was really impacted by was called embedding career and technical education programs. So what is different about this from maybe what a traditional CTE program might look like, where as a student is in school, and they're either at an ISD or in a traditional school, is that these programs are actually embedded in businesses. And so a student will go out into the community, whether it's into a manufacturing business or into a media production company or an attorney's office, and they actually get to be in the workplace for several hours out of the day, learn from professionals in that environment, and then also their traditional teachers are actually in the business with them. And so what we were told was this, that industry right now is telling us that their employees, their new workforce, are lacking the ability to collaborate, communication skills, critical thinking skills, and initiative, whereas students are saying that they're lacking the relevancy in the classroom. And so what I love about career and tech ed is it really marries those two things, teaches students about what they need to do to be successful in the workplace, and helps students understand the relevancy of what they're learning in the classroom. Let's see, so what I really like about this particular model for CTE as well, that I would love for us to be thinking about as we look at reimagining Ottawa Hills or any of our schools really, is that it kind of relieves the pressure on facilities, right? So traditionally, we have to build the school to look like the workplace. But instead, in this particular model, we can bring students to the workplace, allowing us to have greater flexibility with those financial resources to do other things in the school. So again, loved that session and spoke certainly to my heart of career and tech ed. And with that, I will hand over to my colleague.
I just have a question.
Yes.
The integrated, what were the locations nationally where that's occurring?
Oh, gosh, that's a great question. So this particular district was, I believe, out of Massachusetts. And so they were an ISD model that was allowing all schools within their district to do this particular model. You know, what I really love too, actually, one more point that I wanted to add is that, you know, one of the key tenants of this is partnerships with community college-level learning and rigor. And so I think oftentimes, when we think about CTE, we think of that vote out of the past where we're just teaching people how to labor, and that is not the case anymore. This is really about incredibly high-level rigor that prepares students for their future in incredibly high-level careers, so added point to that. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Shaki on this?
Right.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I attended two sessions that were especially significant for me. And the first one was poverty, children living in poverty and how it impacts their education. This was, the speaker now is a PhD from Idaho, but he at one time taught at Grand Rapids Creston. And so he came over and talked to Jen and me immediately when he found out we were from Grand Rapids, but he gave us this book on children in poverty and spoke about how important it was for the children to be valued and to be heard. And it's sort of tied in with what I heard when I went to hear a luncheon speaker, Henry Cisneros, who used to be the Housing and Urban Development Director under President Clinton, but he talked about how important it is that we develop neighborhoods that speak to the fact that our kids need to be in neighborhoods where they have access to positive school experiences. Then I also went to another one that talked about how to retain and recruit good teachers, and many of the things that they suggested that we do, we're already doing, so I was glad to hear that. And the last one that I went to that I was especially struck by was charter schools and why do they exist and why are they so popular? And he suggested, the speaker suggested, that we look for the reasons that the parents in these charter schools, why are they sending their kids to these charter schools? And some of the things that they will tell people who come and ask them is they say, oh, the teachers are better, or the class is, the school is smaller, or they're getting more a thematic experience. And I was very proud of the fact that many of the things that the speaker suggested that we do were things that we are doing, making our schools, high schools smaller, making sure that we have lots of AP classes for kids who want them, but at the same time recognizing that everybody's going to go to college, providing career tech and career education for them. And so I was very impressed by that, and I did come away with one thing that I think we need to do, is we need to have a private person go around, not go around, but necessarily send out a survey to everybody in the district who wants to say something about schools and find out what it is that drives people, not necessarily our parents and not necessarily coming from us, but some independent surveyor who could perhaps give us some information that we aren't privy to right now. But it was a wonderful experience, and I enjoyed my first-class ride home. I got bumped up after first class, and Jenna's not speaking to me anymore.
She waved at me as I passed.
I didn't pay for it, I just got bumped up.
Any questions for Ms. Lewis?
Yeah. I'm wondering, since you were in the national level of conference convention, and it was held in San Antonio, Texas, where there's a significantly huge population of Hispanic Americans, and the second language issue has been foremost in districts where there's an increase in the number of Hispanics present, such as Grand Rapids Public Schools. What specifically, if any mentions, there might have been in teacher training, or in adaptation of our curriculum, or our instructional practices, or our philosophy, embracing the idea of a second language and promoting the maintenance or the development of the children's first language, whether that be Spanish or some other language? And just where that philosophy may have been articulated within one of these sessions or supported? And then, you know, training, training of teachers with language in mind, language skills and adaptation to embracing a child's native language in the classroom and utilizing that with certain strategies that are appropriate, so that we can accelerate the level of achievement for this population, which then impacts the total achievement of the district.
Well, the significance and importance of that was mentioned by Secretary Cisneros in his speech, discussing the fact that we do have so many kids who do not speak their first language. So he talked about that, and they also discussed that a bit in the poverty section, recognizing that unfortunately, a lot of kids who come here as immigrants might live in poverty. So those things were addressed, but I can't say that they were specifically, that we were specifically given suggestions on how we might improve, just kind of reiterating how important it is that we are always aware of that.
Yeah, I think it was addressed more at an awareness level than at a tactical level, unfortunately. I would say the same for the session I was in on this teacher career pathways. They talked about the importance of teacher teams, that those teams should not just be a grade necessarily or a subject area, but rather really holistic, so also include both special education and ESL, so that all teachers on a team are working on all ways that our students are impacted. So again, more of an awareness, I would say, at that level.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Dr. FOB, the members of the board, I'd like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Wether O'Neill, present, FOB, members of the board. Filling in for Mel Atkins, he's a little under the weather, and here to share information about the upcoming Collaborative Youth Fair, Saturday, April 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at Ottawa Hills. This is a celebration of our Loop after-school program. And students have been working on various projects. This is the chance for the students from each of the Loop sites, which is basically all of our elementary, K and middle schools, will be there to showcase their projects, to celebrate, to have fun. This event is free and open to the public. There's free lunch, free transportation for the Loop students themselves, games, prizes, and entertainment. If you want something that just will uplift your spirit, this is a great event to go to. I've gone to it in many years, and we just encourage you and members of the public to come and join us and celebrate our youth. The theme is "Using the Best of Your Brain," and you're going to see some really exciting projects on display, so.
Thanks, John. Next, we have a number of action items. The first is our purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion regarding that? When you're ready, Ms. Grant, you take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. And President FOB?
Yes. I'm going to ask you, Ms. Lewis, to give us a basic summary of what we're voting on before I call for a motion for approval on the changes in policy.
Do we do these one by one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. The first one that we have here is Bylaw 1-800. It concerns public school academies, and this policy was just shortened to specify that the board may enter into a contract and a charter, public school academy, in accordance with state law and pursuant to the guidelines set forth by the Michigan Department of Education, Superintendent. The other details were eliminated from the policy because they were components of the state law and guidelines, and these things will change. So our policy now speaks in a more broader way that we don't have to change anything if the laws change.
Do I have a motion for approval of first reading, acceptance of first reading?
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns, discussion? Ms. Grant, you take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Next one. Policy 2250, Superintendent Evaluation. This policy was amended to clarify that the board will use the state-approved evaluation tools. The timeline for the evaluation was also modified to reflect the fact that the evaluation period will be from January to December.
All right. Do we have a motion for approval of the first reading of Policy 2250?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? Go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next one is Policy 8045, having to do with homeless children. And this policy was amended to eliminate the reference to "No Child Left Behind" and a few other minor editings in language.
Do we have motion for approval of 8045, first reading?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
Any discussion? Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. And President FOB?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next policy is 8255, dealing with terrorists and terrorist threats and acts. The policy was amended to delete the zero-tolerance language because law now requires that the board consider additional factors before permanently expelling anyone for anything other than weapons and sex-related charges.
Do we-
And the definition for, sorry, the definition for what constitute a terrorist threat or act was amended to reflect that these actions must intend to create extreme fear in more than one person, and this change was made to distinguish between this policy and our bullying policy.
Do we have motion for approval of 8255?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
Yes. On the reinstatement of students, you know, for terroristic threats, I want us to think about this for a moment. I mean, I understand that there has to be some way to come back, but would we see ourselves as a district responsibly allowing students to come back after having made terroristic threats or community terroristic acts that rose to the level of expulsion?
Well, I think the thing is, is that the board must consider additional factors before expelling the kids. So it is not as though kids who make those threats will not be punished, it's just that we're not automatically going to kick them out. My understanding is that the only time that we will automatically expel someone-
Not concerned about them being kicked out.
Oh.
I'm concerned about them coming back.
Well, you know-
After their actions have resulted in a terroristic threat, I mean, that terroristic threat could be something that was carried out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So would we bring back a person like, you know, the young man who went wild in Parkland, Florida?
Well-
I mean, I know that's an extreme example.
Well, I would distinguish between threat and act, you know, because we definitely had that conversation. So in the context of the Parkland situation, that would be an act and not a threatening regardless of our policy. But that aside, this doesn't tie the district's hands and says that we have to allow some real egregious offense to return to the district. It simply says that we won't make, for lack of a better phrase, a knee-jerk reaction and say, just because there was a terroristic threat, that you can't return. But I would do say, you did say one that rises to the level of expulsion, so you know, that obviously could be something to consider. But I don't think it ties the district's hands, I guess, at the end of the day. Are you saying you would like it to specifically say that if a threat rose to the level of expulsion, that they not be allowed to return?
I'm not sure of the language at this point. I am concerned about the perils that we place to our staff and to our students in our community in terroristic actions like this, threats, also assaults on teachers, assaults on staff, bringing guns to school, committing, you know, acts of violence toward individuals within our school system. And the message that it continues to pose to our community that, you know, safety in schools is something that we'll just find some other way to deal with and allow people to come back after those very high levels of infractions.
So currently, law-
For safety.
Currently, law states regarding the guns and the sexual violence, and you're suggesting that we make policy that has zero tolerance regarding anything that falls under terrorist acts or threats?
I would suggest that it would be certainly in sync with a national reaction to the increased violence and terroristic threats that we see commonplace in our society. And yes, we ought to be thinking about sending the proper message.
Well, I, well, I just, I personally think that having the option to deal with things on a case-by-case basis is appropriate, and believe in the confidence of the board and the others to vet the case, in which if it was an egregious act, there would not be, you know, returning the student. But I hate to tie the hands of the process to not discern amongst what the act would be, so that is my personal sense. I would like to see this policy stand.
I want to make the point that it was amended to delete the zero-tolerance language because the law now requires the board to consider additional factors. Right. And it's not as though we cannot expel students who make these terrorist threats or do something along that line, but it is that we can no longer just automatically kick them out.
Okay. So there you have it.
And I think, if I can just comment too, I think the process that we're stating here is that the superintendent has enough evidence to begin to act on whatever threat is there, and then the further help that's needed to address that issue, including expulsion if that's what is necessary, and also to report it to the law. Another question I would have is, again, given the state that we live in, what are we doing as a district to prepare our schools for those? Are they having drills? Are they, you know, talking about those kinds of issues? Are they preparing our kids, and certainly our parents, to talk about that information or those pieces? I know sometimes as parents, our kids may talk something, and they may not realize that that's going to carry some consequences, and so that conversation needs to be had in terms of how, as parents, we address our kids, even fooling around and saying something or pretending-
So those are some great observations. They're outside the scope of the policy. My understanding is the policy is bringing it in compliance with current law. So if there's no further discussions, we could take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Next is Policy 9190, and basically, this policy was amended to ensure that the requirements also includes other, you need to have parental permission or schools' permission to have a public interview. So if the media comes in, it has to be cleared by the building principal, and they can't just come and talk to our kids.
Do I have motion for approval of first reading of 9190?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion regarding this? Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
The next one is Student Teaching and Internships, Policy 9840. This one was amended to just broaden the language that would include internship opportunities for ancillary staff.
Do we have a motion for first reading of 9840?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Concerns? Take the vote.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
And the last one is Policy 9830, dealing with colleges and universities. This policy was deleted because the board had already adopted a revised dual enrollment in middle college policy on March 6.
Do I have a motion for approval of the elimination of Policy 9830?
So moved.
Support?
Support.[1726.83]
Any concerns? All right, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Great. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Take the vote when you're ready. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. President FOB?
Yes.
All right, we have no discussion items on the agenda. I see we have several cards for public comment. Ms. Grant, when you're ready, if you want to call some folks down.
All right. We will start with Jamison Ashbaugh, Natalie De, Desm, I'm sorry, Desmires, and Ryan Jeanette.
Jamison is declining.
Mary Jo Thompson.
Thank you. Greetings. I come here before you today not as only a concerned citizen, but a child of special education and a decent human being. I come here to speak on Patricia O'Neill, Patricia Neal, and her diplomatically discourteous words and actions towards the students and parents of Grand Rapids Public Schools. Neal has proven many times, many things over the years, she has proven that the DeVos style of education reform is ineffective and dangerous to students in, of special, in special and general education. During your tenure, DeVos has proven she owns you, snapping her fingers and summoning you and controlling you like a puppet. From reports and quotes from you, DeVos has paid for your service to her. Your work with DeVos over the year, past five years, has seen a 74% illiteracy rate of third graders in predominantly black communities. It has seen a systematic attack against special education, and it has seen an incompetence of the highest order coming from the office of superintendent to combat these threats to education. Your quote of, "She does what I, what I tell her to do," when referring to Lamore, has only shown that your incompetence, but yours when working for the school and district. As seen from the pre, seen from the speakers that you will hear today, Lamore and her actions are a direct threat to the safety and welfare of the, of students in special education. My question is this: If she does what you tell her to do, then you have been attacking these students of special education. And try to, and what you're trying to do to this district is force these students into going into ineffective and ineffective charter in private education, to try to demoralize the public sector. But that's because that's what your DeVos puppeteer wants you to do. Your attacks on, her attacks on education are in turn your attacks on special education. It has come to this: We as a community and as concerned citizens and as decent people are calling for your resignation and firing from your position so somebody with actual experience can come forth and make this district shine. I for one will not, will demand your resignation by no later than this meeting's ending. You are a threat, and you must be removed either by force or by your own hand. I will end with two quotes, actually. I decided on the second quote earlier today. The first quote is by Ecuador Garcia: "Nobody is born a warrior. You choose to be one when you refuse to stay seated. You choose to be one when you refuse to back down. You choose to be one when you stand up after getting knocked down. You choose to be one because if not you, who?"
Thank you, Mr. Jeanette. Your time, your time is up.
My last quote is...
Your time is up, Mr. Jeanette.
I would normally say "Guten Tag" and "See you again," but I don't want to see you in that seat, so goodbye.
Mr. Jeanette, your time is up. Ms. Thompson?
Hi. My name is Mary Jo Thompson, and I didn't have a whole lot planned to write down, but I became a grandmother this last week, and I was thinking, of all the stuff that we have said about special ed, I mean, every week we're here, every week we speak, you know, on it. Have you ever considered if your own children were in special ed, if your own grandchildren were in special ed and getting treated the way these kids do? The media's all got copies of the food that they serve that's moldy, toilets that don't fix, that aren't fixed, there are no privacy, there's nothing, just to deal with these kids that are always going to be children, even though they're older and they need to have things that are right for them. You know, we're all a group. You guys know that, we're all a group. We're getting stronger every day. We're solid. We don't meet individually, we come together as a group, and our wall is getting higher and longer with people that wanting to join us. And all we ask is that someone at least communicate with us where they are, and when we don't hear any communication except calling individuals in for meetings, which we said we won't do, it doesn't make sense. And I just want to say, the teachers are scared to talk, I have kids in special ed, because they're scared about retaliation that you, Neal, have said to them about getting back at them, something. I don't have the direct quote, but it was something about retaliation against them, and that's been felt, because when you talk to people at the school, like, "Can't talk to you about this." And that shouldn't be at our schools. Our schools should be open and honest, and let's all hear from everyone else. It does not a democracy anymore. I don't know, I, that's all I have to say. I just don't understand this. I mean, I wish somebody would help us understand why you keep seeing and hearing things about our special ed kids, and nothing gets done. Kids that were out of school before are still out of school. No one's reached out to them and say, "Hey, we've got a plan for your child. They're out the rest of the year." And that's not fair. These are people who pay funds to the public schools so their kids can go. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm sorry, I'm going to get your name wrong again.
Okay. You don't believe my husband for that one.
One more time, I'm going to get it right.
My maiden name was Kerr, and then...
So easy.
Damaris.
Damaris. Thank you, Ms. Damaris.
President and members of the board, superintendent, I'm here today. I think this is my third or fourth time here, and I'm ready to go for another 100 meetings, but I'm hoping it doesn't come down to that. I'm hoping that we can come to a conclusion and we can help fix our special education program. I'm hoping that will be heard, and we had 847 staff, special education teachers and staff, who signed that petition, and I would like to believe also that this is a democracy or something close to it, and I'm wondering why we're not being heard. I'm hoping that, that it isn't just a small minority of leaders who are not listening to the mass of the people. I hope that that's not what it is. I hope that, that you listen to the people and go with what the people want. I mean, this is, this is America, and so I'd like to think that our schools resemble a democracy, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Three more names.
I have Linda Brower, Jack Prince, and Brenda Behrens.
Ms. Brower, you want to go ahead?
I'm Linda Brower, and the coordinator at Grand Rapids for 22 years, which I do volunteer here. And I'm a parent, and I'm a teacher, and I was clear in Michigan for 12 years, where I saw kids over time, a small district, so I got to see kids evolve, and I can see how important it is to invest in them before they get discouraged and, and use hope. My son is a child with special needs, and I'm so grateful that after this September 504 plan failed, that legislation was passed March 11th, 1999, saying that children who are legally conceived could find that special education under the other health impaired category. I was surprised then, when I heard a person who does childcare say she specializes in kids with special needs, daycare, say that she had been told by parents in public schools that they no longer provide some other health impaired. And when we met with Laurel Moore and John Campole at the Community Family Partnership, they were talking about the reason that a lot of these services were being cut was because they were, they put the interest in inclusion, and I can totally understand the benefit of having students participate and, you know, mentoring, that's wonderful. And I really am grateful that we're having the programs that they hip-hop and examine that is going to help create a video about children being part of a solution and the interests of, of restored practices. So for that, I'm grateful to parents in public schools. But I am greatly concerned because my son benefited so much from having special education under other health impaired, and he would have never graduated from high school in that head yet. And when I think about the concerns about children being terrorist threats and all that, because they don't feel that they belong in school, they don't feel like they belong in mainstream society, we need to help all the children belong and know that they matter and have deserved to ask for them. So if there's something we can do, whether it's a money issue or whatever it is, if there are efforts to, to, you know, put so much pressure on you to be a, you know, pass standardized tests, I don't know what it might be, but let us know. If there's something we need to do, write to legislators, let us have a solution.
Thank you. Ms. Behrens?
Tonight, you're going to see the hashtag #GrandRapidsStands, and many of you may wonder what that means, so I'd like to share. We are a team of parents, educators, and concerned citizens, and our goal is to give a voice to the voiceless. Grand Rapids Stands means standing up for students and teachers in special education who deserve more than they are currently getting. Grand Rapids Stands means that we care about each and every individual and want to see them succeed in everything that they do, that they are respected and treated with dignity and kindness. To do so, our students and staff deserve to have a principal in every building. They deserve qualified and appropriate staff in every classroom who will treat our students with care and respect. Our administration talks about the importance of inclusion, but that should mean always, not just when it's convenient or easy. Some of our programs have been changed to provide more inclusiveness. So Grand Rapids Stands speaks for the AI students at Union High School that were told they could not participate in a door decorating contest for Christmas, and the students like my son who have never been included in a class trip. Grand Rapids Stands means standing up for all students in Grand Rapids Public, but I specifically talk about the students at CTC Straight who deserve simple things, like a certified food server to ensure the quality and safety of their meals. They deserve privacy while using the restroom. They deserve to have a safe and updated evacuation plan. They deserve to have, to know what to do in a time of fire, or crisis, or tornado. For safety, the staff should be able to see out the windows, which have been replaced with plexiglass. They deserve to be in an environment that is clean, safe, and appropriate for young adults. It means standing for the kids who are not getting the full attention of the staff because of a lack of qualified educators in the district, and that's district-wide. I don't just mean certified staff, I mean staff that uses positive reinforcement and acts appropriately when a child is struggling. Our children should not be mishandled or bullied by any grown adult. Grand Rapids Stands means supporting special education parents that are being told, are not being told of the options for their children, like the right to education until age 26. It means communicating with parents about changes, discipline, accidents, and positive behavior. Grand Rapids Stands means we, the community members, will stand up and do what is right for our most vulnerable students and those that have dedicated their lives to giving our children a future. But last but not least, Grand Rapids Stands for a community that wants to trust our school board, who are elected officials and the administration, the leaders, who should be held accountable and make good decisions for our most valuable treasures, our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Behrens. Mr. Prince?
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to celebrate, actually. You know, we have a lot of tension in the room, so I'd like to break a little of that tension with the word "celebrate." I wanted to use some categories as possibility, and it took me a while to find one I think that really affects everybody. I thought maybe the highest elementary reading levels in Kent County would be a celebration, but we can't use that. I thought maybe the high school reading levels would be competitive with the other 20 schools in Kent County. Couldn't do it. Thought maybe the placement of seniors in colleges could be a moniker for number one in the GRPS against the other schools in Kent County, but no, no. Or the most graduates leaving college that left Grand Rapids Public Schools. That didn't work. I thought maybe Grand Rapids Public Schools would rank as the number one school for pay to teachers, but no, and sadly, they're at the bottom or near the bottom. Or athletic success resulting in scholarships, or consistency in funding for special ed programs. I just couldn't get a celebration there, but I found one. I found one that does affect every program, every student at school, and this is it. Grand Rapids Public Schools is number one in Kent County for the amount of money cash given to the administration. Now, this is an amazing statistic, because this isn't close. Number two in Kent County is Cedar Springs, 20% behind Grand Rapids Public Schools. Grand Rap, Grand Rapids Public Schools pays its administration 60% more than Forest Hill, excuse me, Wyoming, 57% more than Forest Hills, six, or 58% more than Rockford. So there is the award I want to stress. That's the celebration. And not only are those percentages extremely high, you have a dynasty. Grand Rapids Public Schools has hired this administrative cost, winning for five years in a row. You know, I used to be a coach. Any athletic team that can win a championship five years in a row, it's a dynasty. So I'm going to claim Grand Rapids Public Schools, you're a dynasty of spending. You have owned this title for five years in a row, and possibly for more. Now, who are these MVPs of salary? Well, five, the superintendent and four assistants, they make almost a million dollars per year, almost a million dollars. Now, some of that money, I want to get the microphone close here, wasn't enough evidently because Betsy DeVos found it necessary to add to that financial sum. She gave $67,000 to the superintendent for a personal coach. And for traveling expenses, she offered the superintendent to fly her and an entourage to Washington DC, where they would sit in front of senators for Betsy DeVos's confirmation. No other superintendent would fit the bill. I would ask this, I would ask that people, uh, question the purchase power of their tax money. Is this really where we should be sending our dollar bills? And I, I don't want to be sarcastic, I think this is an issue that we need to look at seriously. The second place in, in spending in Kent County goes to Cedar Springs. Ironically, they just relieved their superintendent.
Mr. Prince, your time is done. You want to bring three more names out?
This is a trophy out...
Mr. Prince, your time is done.
So next I have Christina Donaldson, Jimmy Jackson, and Tommy Watson. Wesley Watson?
Greetings.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
I'd like to thank the board here, I'd like to thank everybody who is here today, I'd like to thank community members, parents, and teachers. I understand that you guys have a big responsibility, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. I understand that this is not just a Grand Rapids Public Schools thing, this is a thing across our whole state. Lieutenant Governor Seth, that within the Special Education Task Force, funding for special education is underfunded by $700 million. When you look at that, that's not a Grand Rapids Public Schools thing. That's a thing across the whole state, and so collectively, with our communities, we must work together with other public school systems in the area to fight this issue. But we must not throw the baby out with the bathwater. We must not turn a blind, a blind eye to the issue. We must not just focus on... We must not just focus on one piece of the pie and focus on the whole pie. This is a very, very key moment in our society right now, very key moment. And with the stigmas that we create, special education do not need more stigmas within our community. Special education does not need the stigma of being looked down upon. Special education, every student within special education should reach their maximum full potential in the classroom. At no point should the students feel that it's a ceiling above them where they can't reach their full potential. I understand that we must create prevention and intervention programs within the district to solve this issue. I understand that we must focus each student within special education, have a very special program for these students specializing on improving their day-to-day process, improving their education. Me and my parents, we work in the public health field. I understand that special education and public health runs hand-in-hand. The state of Michigan spends 1% of their budget on public health. I guess that can explain the reason why we underfund special education by $700 million. But we must not throw the baby out with the bathwater. We must not turn a blind eye to this issue. We must create and create a program for teachers to fulfill their purpose and their duties towards special needs students. No student should feel, or parents should feel, that their student or their kid doesn't have the necessary potential to reach their maximum level of greatness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, hi. My name is Jimmy Jackson. I'm here, I'm here because I myself am an epileptic who has short-term and long-term memory issues and ADHD. And the number-one thing that I want to say is that being on special ed can really take a toll on a person. You can feel alone, you can feel depressed, you can want to give up at times, and for some people, it can even be embarrassing. You know, even a person who's walking around that doesn't look like he has a special education need like myself, you know. Hey, what do they say, don't judge a book by its cover, right? But now, what is intriguing to me is that things are being taken away from the students when it seems like the city is on the rise. That's what kind of had me lost and confused. It seems like the city of, like, the city overall of Grand Rapids is on the come-up. So where are the tax dollars being split, or, excuse me, being put in to the board? Like, you know what I mean? Like, how is it that the special ed kids are the ones that are being put to the side? And another thing that I wanted to try to, try to touch base on is that when you have a disability, you feel like you're a burden to society in a sense, if people are just taken away from you. So I'll give, I'll just, I'll make up a really quick example. If me, per se, if I was a sophomore, and then the school size went down, then me, as a person who has seizures, I would feel like I'm just, you know, a burden on the public school board. I'd feel like, you know, people don't care about me as a person. And a person like me with my disability, that just would trigger things like more seizures, and it just gets worse and worse and worse. Now, one more thing that I wanted to touch another base on is the fact that 40 to 50, it seemed like 40 to 50% of the overall staff signed that petition. Those are the ones who were brave enough to stand up and, you know, make a fight. So if 40 to 50% sign that, how many people are thinking in the back of their head that they don't approve of the special education board? You know what I mean? And, like, yeah, I just think that people need to get more recognition for things like, you know, disability, and they shouldn't be pushed aside.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Time's up. Mr. Tommy Watson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for having us here. Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. I understand a lot about this. I come from a long line of educators. My father was on the treasurer of the school board for 30 years. My oldest, my middle sister is assistant superintendent. My oldest sister just graduated, I mean, excuse me, just retired from being a special needs teacher. But also, and I am a special needs person, you know, I'm going to let you into my little life, you know. I, you wouldn't even know it, I just did dialysis about six hours ago. So, but, but I'm productive. I'm productive. I've had over 19 major surgeries. I'm productive. And I understand, it's, I understand it, trying to juggle the budget and everything like that, but we can't, like he said, we can't throw the baby out with the baby water. We have to find some kind of provisions where these children and adults can be taken care of. And I really learned a lot once I started working in the mental health field and understanding everything like that, and I'm like, oh, wow, this is, you have to do it. They're vulnerable, but they're also productive. So we have to make some kind of provisions where the students and the young adults can have these special need funds there. It is hard, it really is. I sit in dialysis, and I see the people that come in there with limbs gone and on wheelchairs, and they, you, one person might have $100,000 worth of Adderall wrappers on their seat just to stay, be able to breathe coming through that door. I know it's very, very expensive, very expensive. And I know it's not all you all's fault. We know where our legislatures, we have, like the lady said before, let us know what we need to do. If we need to put pressure on our legislators to get them to make special provisions and fund you all for this, I understand. I know you all doing a great job. This is not against you all. Just like they were talking about the provision before, sometimes your hands are tied, but sometimes we got to just tell, let us know, how can we get your hands untied? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Right.
Go ahead, Ms. Schulting.
So, when 847 teachers, when they signed, the teachers and staff at GRPS signed the original petition to remove Special Education Director Laura Lemoore, they were standing up against the dismantling of special education and against a culture of fear and retaliation. That's why they cast a vote of no confidence, which cannot be ignored, because 847 strong cannot be wrong. When Superintendent Neal responds by saying that Lemoore is, quote, "executing program changes she, Neal, once implemented," unquote, see Scott M. Live., February 28, 2018, she is then saying that she is, that Neal is responsible for the changes to dismantle major portions of special education. And as a result, many students, programs, teachers in special education suffer under these changes and under the current culture, because 847 strong cannot be wrong. If these are not signs of dismantling special education, then I don't know what is. Closing a large special needs school, we know, KVO, and relocating adult students with disabilities to a small, previously vacant elementary school, that's suffering. The GRPS application of ESY has given many students with severe autism the bare minimum. Many have suffered during the last year. When it was implemented for the first time last year, 50% of students with severe autism in the Center Bay Schools of Lincoln, Lincoln Developmental of Pine Grove, they were denied ESY. They had no school during the summer days. And as a result, they suffered. And this year, with 150 days have gone in the school year, out of 180, there's 30 days left, I'm, I don't even know if my son will have ESY. And I have a son, a 13-year-old teenage son, who is completely nonverbal. He cannot say one word. He doesn't understand anything. And he, he will be denied, it looks like, ESY, because I'm supposed to have a decision within 45 days of school ending, and I've got nothing. And guess what? You know, during spring break, spring break was what, one, two weeks, two weeks? I don't even know. So, but the point is that during spring break, he was actually putting his backpack on the chair, and his coat, and his bus fest, because he wanted to go to school. One week, two weeks, that was too long for him. Can you imagine a whole summer where he doesn't have school? This is a very harsh application of ESY. And this GRPS application of ESY will make him suffer, and just like it made 50% of the students and families, let me, I'll just finish.
Your time's spent up for a while.
They've suffered last year, so.
Thank you. Ms. Asman?
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment and read the petition. Concerned citizens of greater Grand Rapids started this petition to the GRPS Board. In February, 847 teachers and staff at Grand Rapids Public Schools cast their vote of no confidence by signing the Michigan Education Association petition to remove Laura Lemoore. As a special ed director, complaints included the toxic atmosphere for teachers and staff, along with the health and safety risks to 4,000 special education students. This represents an unprecedented level of educational complaints in GRPS history. These 4,000 special education kids are being betrayed, neglected, and being abused, in the sense of the lack of a proper education they should get, said Mike Stephens, the MEA Uniserve Director. During her February 28, 2018 press conference, GRPS Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal admitted, "We have not been able to fully staff emotional impairment and autism spectrum disorder programming this year." Despite mounting tensions, Neal persistently expresses full confidence in support of Laura Lemoore, impending majority teacher and staff requests for Lemoore's removal. Among numerous cuts to GRPS special education programming, Lemoore closed a fully functional vocational school, KVO, relocating young adult students with disabilities to a previously vacant elementary school, which lacks both adult facilities and a safe environment for adults with special needs. For five years running, GRPS has had the highest administrative salaries in Kent County. Teresa Neal and her four assistant superintendents made a combined taxpayer-funded salary of nearly $1 million, see Kent ISD records from 2011 to 2016. Considering the excessive administrative salaries, it is difficult to imagine how Neal can justify cutting essential, special needs facilities and programming. Meanwhile, GRPS teachers' salaries remain among the lowest in Kent County. Teresa Weatherall Neal and Betsy DeVos has long supported each other. At the beginning of Neal's appointment as GRPS superintendent, more than five years ago, Betsy and her husband, Dick DeVos, gave Neal $67,000 for a management, for a management coach. In Donald Trump's decision to appoint Betsy DeVos as U.S. Secretary of Education, Neal stated that DeVos is knowledgeable about education. She is concerned about children. She's been a great supporter of mine and the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Asman. Ms. Hunn?
I'm going to finish reading the petition. Superintendent Weatherall Neal's dismissal of the vote of no confidence by the 847 teachers and staff in Special Education Director Laura Lemoore makes it necessary to demand her removal as superintendent from GRPS. Neal's refusal acts as a statement that she does not care about the overwhelming no-confidence vote, the low staff morale, the toxic work environment, the culture of fear and retaliation, and the dismantling of special education under Director Laura Lemoore. If Neal's defense is that Laura Lemoore is only doing what she asks her to do, then the problem of the toxic work atmosphere and the dismantling of social education are caused by Neal. And as a personal note, I just want to say this is not a political issue or tactic. This is a concern for basic human dignity and an issue, or a basic human dignity issue and a tactic to support our students and special education staff.
Thank you, Ms. Hunn.
Thank you for your time.
Melissa Cortaid, Doug Kirkoff, Alex Kelly. And also, Event C, I'm sorry, I can't read that one.
Ms. Cortaid?
On April 19, 2017, I attended a meeting at GRPS University. The meeting was hosted by Laura Lemoore, Laura Ochoa, and Barbara Osborne. In this meeting, specific questions were asked about the new location of Straight School on 850 Chatham. Very specifically, parents asked if the Straight School would be ready by the beginning of this school year. The parents were told yes. I spoke with this, this school board on two occasions prior to this meeting tonight. The first time I spoke to the board was about a year and a half ago, asking to please be aware of the issues and address the concerns in special education. The second time I addressed the board, I asked if you would please visit your special education schools, especially Straight School, the school I visited because my son could potentially attend this school. I just want to thank you, if any of you have. If you visited this school, you probably saw what I saw. I realize not all buildings are going to look the same, but fair isn't everybody getting the same thing, fair is everybody getting what they need in order to be successful. These are responses from the district administration I found on woodtv.com. There are sufficient toilets at Straight, in fact, there are more at the community-based site than at either Mayfield or the previous location of Lincoln KVO. I personally don't believe the number of toilets is the problem. Maybe the fact that the toilets are made for the previous preschool center and only a few inches from the ground may be the problem. Maybe the lack of privacy, no locks on the doors, the fact that there was not enough room to fit a wheelchair, and so they decided to take the stalls out. A grab bar that was so poorly placed, a staff member did get hurt, and a student could have been hurt when it was pulled off the wall. Not to mention, there is no grab bar for the second toilet. Another thing I got from WoodTV, "We have been very responsive to the issues and concerns. We have acknowledged where the areas of improvement are and are taking, and have taken necessary steps to address them." Mrs. Neal, I can assume you didn't eat a meal like this, this today. You'll see the rotten food that you serve to your children, or your students. There are no standards for serving food to the students. Upon my research, food is carried over from the neighboring elementary school, and who knows if it is kept to appropriate temperature. No Safe Serve certified staff and no kitchen staff, period. Past prac, this is also a comment, or a statement I found, "Past practices was to replace broken glass windows with plexiglass, and plexiglass gets foggy over time. This practice has been discontinued. Last fall, there was a series of storms that hit the area, and the window leaks were evident. These were promptly addressed by maintenance staff." There is, in fact, plastic glass over the windows, and, and any, and any danger was, may not be evident because they can't see through them, the teachers and the staff. There are no rules.
Ms. Cortaid, your time is up. Thank you. Mr., I'm trying to read your name here, Kypev?
Correct.
Got it right. Thank you.
My full remarks have been handed out to you.
My full remarks have been handed out to you. I'm probably going to have to abbreviate these, so I will try to be succinct as I can. I'm here on behalf of my son, who was a student of Grand Rapids Public Schools in the A S D program from the time he was in preschool. Our son was pushed out. He was graduated of the special education program two years ago at the age of 18 with a certificate of completion rather than a diploma. We didn't know until much later that he was legally entitled to remain in school until he was at the age 26, as long as he had an operative I E P. This was never disclosed to us at any point in time as his parents. Over the years, we saw huge changes in the staffing. We saw teachers who were wonderful, who cared for our students, were pushed out through organizational, like I can say, best, I can say is just a lack of organizational support. They were exhausted when they left. As an organization, my impression is that Grand Rapids Public Schools has tenaciously embraced and continues to embrace the now overturned de minimis standard, the idea that special needs children are only entitled to an education that is little better than no education at all. We tried for years to get our son mainstreamed. We tried to get him more advanced work. Every time, we were told it couldn't be done. The reason we were given, supposedly, it was only because there were not enough staff, not enough classroom aides. The real reason, however, came out during our exit I E P with him. Mr. Aguilar, Union High School's Dean of Students, explained to me at that point in time that the decision had already been made when he was in seventh or eighth grade, based on the perception that he would be able to achieve a high school diploma, not to allow him to be mainstreamed. We were unaware of the decision, we were not involved in the decision, and the decision made absolutely no, no room for future improvement on the part of our son. He had some other remarks that were quite eye-opening during that time. When I asked him about the possibility of getting into a G E D program, he informed me that my son would have to be at least 21. He was 18. In other words, he was supposed to be in limbo for two and a half years until he achieved the age of 21. It wasn't until we got in touch with Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly that we were informed that because he was graduated with a certificate of completion instead of a diploma, he had been eligible for adult education G E D almost from day one. He went on to explain his ideas about my son going after a G E D. These are his words. "Mr. Kypevoff, you need to encourage your son to develop goals that will be more achievable for him. You see, the G E D is a very difficult exam, even for neurotypical individuals. For someone with a developmental disability, it's nearly impossible to pass. You need to help him develop more realistic goals." He then went on to explain to me why the certificate of completion was such a benefit for someone with special needs, emphasizing such jobs as dishwashing, bussing, or bagging groceries.
Mr. Kypevoff, your time is up.
As I said, you have my full remarks.
Thank you. Is this Mr. Kelly?
Question, quick procedural question. Would it be possible for me to donate my time to Doug, or is that not allowed? In that case, in that case, I'll say this. When I first heard about this a few months ago, you know, I wish I could say I was shocked, but I'm not. You know, this, the pattern that happens here is too common in public education. You know, people like Betsy DeVos, you know, Superintendent Neal's benefactor, you know, have been working on, you know, policies and practices, like discussing special education in Grand Rapids as a part of the ideological attack of public education, of public education as a whole. This, you know, the, you know, the end, the end result, you know, the end result of this, you know, will have profit for anyone in special education or not, you know, who wants to use public education, who wants usable public education in the future. You know, it's, there's no reason what's, you know, there's no reason whatsoever why, you know, educators like yourselves should, you know, should allow someone like Laura, Laura Lemoore to continue destroying the lives of students. Or to allow a superintendent to support someone who is doing so. You know, I, while I support the call for Superintendent Neal to resign, I doubt she will do so of her own accord, so I call on all of, all of you at the next opportunity to not renew her contract or whatever procedural means you would need to, to remove her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have Vince? Please, request that this is a public meeting, request that there's no clapping, audible noises for, out of respect for the meeting. Is Mr. Catalanati?
Yes.
See here? I got it. I'm, I'm doing pretty good tonight with the names. You're the last one, sir. You're, you're between me and supper, so.
Well, I'm not a teacher, and I'm not an administrator. I started my career out in medicine. In 1974, I was physician's assistant, one of the first in the state. It's something I learned then, and I, and it just dawned on me while I was listening here, and that is that when there's a disease sweeping the community, like greed or smallpox, it's the most susceptible to get hit first. You've just got to keep that in mind. It's not, it's not, it's not something maybe you're doing consciously, it's because you've got a disease. I, I have been a disability manager since 1978. I worked on, for Jennifer Granholm at the Governor's Commission on Michigan's business and the A D A. I helped work with that, putting it to work here in the, in the city with a major employer. And I'm an A D A resource person out of, out of Region 5 Chicago, trained at the University of Illinois. So I kind of have a good handle on this. I've placed over 5,000 disabled people returning to work in my course of employment with a major mid-resting retailer who is quite well-known in this community, but I won't sully their name by mentioning it here. I'm an educated person with different abilities. I remember in high school, somebody said to me, "Well, you know, you can get this or that scholarship because you don't walk right." And I said, "Well, why don't you give that to a kid that needs it?" Because I never thought of myself that way, but I had some problems. I got them back now. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer in Grand Rapids, and I'm kind of ticked about the way the money's being spent around here. I'm one of those grumpy old people that says there's too much money being spent. I'm, I'm, I have federal-level qualifications and a national-level reputation, and I'm here because I've got kids, and I've got grandkids. And I came here in 1980 because Grand Rapids was a great place to be. I came here to start a new clinic business, and I met a lady named Bridget Close. And Bridget worked with a program here at the Chamber of Commerce that said Grand Rapids is the right place. And, and I went to work making it the right place for people who work. And I spent my career making sure that people who acquired disabilities were able to return to some kind of productive employment. So I've got some concerns, and I'll be real quick. One, that, that under the A D A, and you all know the chapter and verse, the failure to comply is a criminal offense. It's a civil rights violation. It is not a civil case, okay? You and the rest of you can be each individually and severally sued, and the government won't open a case against you unless the number clicks in at 300,000. They just don't have any reason to do it. So you're under, there's under threat. So it's not just that you're getting a lot of money every year to be administrators. There's $300,000 a head going down in here, and as from what I can tell, it's pretty close to $3 million that you're all going to have to cough up out of your personal income. Plus, the board can be sued. There's no, there's no corporate veil. You've got fines to worry about, and I worry about that because guess who gets to pay for them? And, and there's, there's a real failure here to accommodate the educational needs of every citizen, and that just, I'm not going to use the word, it really bothers me. There's, there's, this place is supposed to be the right place, and it's turning out to be the wrong place.
Mr. Catalanati, your time is up.
Well, all right then. I'll see you on the street.
Thank you. Do we have any superintendent comments?
No comment, Dr. Fop.
Ms. Lewis?
Oh, I've got lots of comments. I just wanted to remind people that March was reading month, and I did get a chance to read to all the first, second, third, and fourth graders at Aberdeen Elementary. I also attended a listening tour that Superintendent Weatherall Neal had, and I was very interested in the comments that were made. They broke us all up into, to groups, and I was listening to parents and concerned citizens and what they want to see in our district, and I was very happy to hear their comments. A lot of them were very supportive about the things we're doing. I also had a chance to tour 54 Jefferson, our new museum school that will open in the fall, and I'm excited for that. I attended the Friends of Kent County, and this might be something that some of the folks here might be interested in doing, because there is a Facebook page for Friends of Kent County, and it is dealing with a totally new way looking at how we fund schools and how we fund children rather than schools. And then, last of all, I was pleased that at one of my conversations in San Antonio with a superintendent from a Chicago suburb, and I was telling her about the kinds of things that we were doing as far as our theme schools and our small high schools and the kinds of things that we are trying to do to reach the needs of all of our kids, she suggested that perhaps next year, Grand Rapids Public Schools should present at the National School Board Association Convention. So I was very pleased with that.
Ms. Slate?
Yes. I want to thank those who shared their concerns here tonight, and appreciate the past sharing also. It does make a difference.
Ms. Grant?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
I guess first I'd like to honor the memory of Pastor Rose from, who passed today, longstanding, strong person in this community, touched a lot of lives. Just want to recognize that. Also, congratulations to new grammars in the audience and the optimism that comes with such things. I will say, it's, you know, it may be a bit challenging to be optimistic in a few different areas, maybe largely because why I definitely always unequivocally support any public effort to hold individuals accountable to goals that are for the greater good. That's never something that should ever be questioned, particularly when you talk about democratic pillars of a society. But I, I will say, the challenge for optimism is that a lot of the commentary was contrived at best, maybe harsh or mean-spirited at times. And one thing I will say about difficult decision-making is that there's never a situation where, decisions that are difficult, are you really going to have a vast majority of people who are in support of a decision, or wouldn't be difficult? So, in, in that context, when we talk about democratic pillars and values, I would hope that the larger landscape of frankly, political nonsense that's sort of governing what we see daily in the media, I would hope that we all try to stand together for Grand Rapids and not allow sort of mean-spirited politics to enter because we don't necessarily like difficult choices. And that's not for me to say whether any choice is right, wrong, good, bad. That's not the point of this diatribe, is just to say that, you know, let us be professional and respectful, and, but continue to advocate for what we think is right or best. You know, to that, though, I do also appreciate.
Excuse me, excuse me.
To that, to that, though, I do also appreciate folks who, I guess, recognize difficulty in the business.
I would respectfully request, this is a public meeting of the Board of Education, you did not hear people interrupt when there's public comment here. I respect the public comment, and I respect my fellow board members and their ability to talk.
I guess at the, at the end of the day, I guess the only thing I would say is that, while again, as I just stated, I'm always supportive of a democratic process, I do ask the question, should democratic processes be a determining factor on the, I guess frankly, the, the employment of professional staff? I think that's just an appropriate question to ask, particularly to a body that is largely made up of folks who believe in the concept of labor unions and protecting individual rights. So should the voice of the masses be a determining factor for a year and a year in regards to whether someone continues, continues to be employed? I just think that's an appropriate question to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Shakke?
No comment this evening.
Dr. Flores?
In, in the spirit of recognizing people who have gone into, I guess, the heavens, if you will, Paul Potter recently passed away, and he was a Veteran of the Year recognized in Kent County, and just want to acknowledge his, his departure, and several others in our community that have passed, and I, you know, in the Hispanic community that I'm familiar with. But I, I would like to say that, that I think that public dialogue is important. I think that discussion from individuals on this board about a particular topic, like special ed and special services, or, or special needs services, really, you know, ought to have a platform, an opportunity to openly discuss these issues, so you can hear just what the perspectives are of board members. And I think it's kind of something wrong with the system where we really don't get a chance to talk about these issues. And I'll say this in public comment, because I've used the public comment part of this, this agenda in the past to articulate some of the concerns that I have. But we really never know where everybody stands. I certainly thank the public who have come here with their concerns, and, and I would encourage you to continue to do so. It is through activism that change is made. And so if you are dedicated, fearless in standing your ground, standing up and articulating your position, then you can't help but be heard. And, and it is, you know, the collection of ideas and support from individuals that make change. So, you know, stay steadfast, I guess, to your beliefs, whatever that brings, whatever that brings. So, thank you.
Reverend Mathias. Reverend Mathias. Ms. Schulting, you are out of order. We are at a point where we have board member comment. You are out of order. Ma'am, I really respectfully ask you to bind the order of the meeting. You are out of order right now.
And I hope she'll get a chance to speak. Her name's Christina.
Ms. Ms. Schulting, I'm going to respectfully ask you to be quiet. We, we are in chair in the meeting, it is time for.
I just want the truth. When you want the information.
Ms. Schulting, I respectfully ask you to leave. Thank you. Reverend Mathias?
Yes, I guess I, I am the last to give a public comment, or one of the last anyway. But again, I did want to thank everyone for coming out and again, making your voice heard to this board. We, we do have difficult decisions that we have to make, and to hear everyone and all of our constituents, sometimes that's a lot of people and a lot of views. I did get to, as you were mentioning, for March reading, I did read for two classes at Burton Elementary, and it was really exciting to go back to Miles Tumpin Ground, but, but also to see our kids again and, and see the life still in them in terms of wanting to learn and, and, and read. That's one of those areas that we're working on, I think, as a district, in terms of raising our, our reading levels and, and our kids so that they're ready. Again, we really appreciate a lot of the conversation that has, has been had here. We certainly have conversations in our boardrooms, and, and sometimes we don't all agree on those things, but we appreciate the, the comments that this public brings. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Mathias, and I have no comment, so the meeting is adjourned.